I'm going to call this meeting to order. The Mayor and Board of Commissioners, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Roth, Commissioner Bronson.
Here.
Commissioner Morning.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Present.
You are the board.
Thank you. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We bow our heads with me for a brief prayer. Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town. God, I ask that you watch over our citizens and our elected body and their families. God, watch over our police department, our first responders, as well as our military, Lord, serving here and overseas as well. God, be with us as we're here this evening and as we leave later. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
All right. Two business meeting items. Town Administrator, do you have those?
Yes, I do. Let's get the computer, get the play right.
Has everybody got their car washed at the new car wash yet?
No.
Okay. Let's open for business while we wait for Calvin.
Calvin, you can go take mine down or you don't need it.
I will. Let me have your keys.
Because I never get my car back.
Yeah, you will. I just don't know what day yet. Wait until it quits raining. But it's a beautiful place down there. After this rain is over, everybody is directed to go to the car wash.
On Alan's tab.
Well, everybody in the room. I think I can handle that. I mean, with my town paycheck.
But you still got people on Facebook who put in about it, though.
Of course.
It's because the ice cream machine's broken.
Really, really.
Town Administrator, do you have those resolutions?
They need to lower their monthly rate to be in line with all the other car washes. They're virtually 20 for the month.
Duly noted, Bill. I think I got a special price for trikes, though, motorcycle trikes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That'll work.
If you stay on it when you go through, it's free. No extra charge for that. Those brushes, though, Bill, keep your helmet on.
I mean, Alan will pay for it, if you put that way.
I'll pay for the first one. It's like, I'll get the first round.
Unfortunately, it, you know, here we go.
Town Administrator, do you have those resolutions?
Can you click them?
Mr. Mayor, I'm being a little...
She doesn't hurt you now from being a friend to me.
It was pretty entertaining the other night.
I've seen that long, haven't you?
Profanity tonight.
She's probably slaughtered.
Yeah. That's... It's been a pretty ripe week for Bernie.
What's that?
It's just been a pretty ripe week for Bernie. What else we got coming up, Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting on the town administrator?
Well, you've got APG.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, we have the opening of APG.
I mean, really?
Do we have a date?
March 11th.
March 11th?
Some would count.
What else can we talk about? Are they going to be giving away free money?
That was quick and down.
Oh, yeah, it's a good idea. While we have the chief.
Free samples. Will the ice cream machine be working?
Let's do it all out of order. We're going to do this like backwards day today.
Chief, report.
Stay with the group.
Well, that's a good idea.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners.
Good evening.
The pleasantries. We haven't had any notable trends of criminal activity in the town. We have had numerous complaints of speed along Main Street, which will be addressed and monitored coming forth, and that ties into some of the other issues that I'm starting to learn about. With the new businesses coming to town along Main Street, we have a lot more pedestrian traffic at night. So, for the motoring traffic, please pay attention to those people walking along Main Street. You do have quite a bit of them crossing the road right here at Town Square, or trying to cross the road against the light, which isn't something that's healthy for them. So, the officers will be paying a great deal of attention to that. You know, crime is one of the main things that we focus on here in town, but quality of life is very close behind it. So, with that being said, when the establishments are discharging, please remember to discharge in an orderly manner. Those that are, had a little bit of too much happiness will be, you know, dealt with by the police department in a sufficient manner. And with that being said, that is my report for now, unless there's some questions.
I can't remember what you asked.
Thank you, Chief.
Cherry Street, traffic.
Oh.
Side parking, that side.
You got it.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have a fix for you at this point. We're still trying to work on that. In the past, there was one set aside to put up signs for speeding along that roadway, but we never really looked at the parking on both sides. It creates a natural slowing pattern for vehicles coming through there, but I can understand some of your concerns, and we'll work on getting something done, or look at it and see if it can be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Both of us didn't have it in our notes, Cherry Street.
I do now. It's right down over here in the corner.
Town Administrator, do you have those resolutions?
Yes, Chief. I'm going to spare you from having to sing or dance to fill in some time. I got it up and running. So, what we have on the agenda tonight is two resolutions. The first one, if you recall at the last meeting, we accepted the annexation, the easement option agreements and the annexation agreements from two property owners out on 273 as part of the town's efforts to extend water and sewer out to the southern states area. I think it's important to state that there are a lot of moving parts in this overall project, so dealing with one doesn't necessarily state that, you know, that the approvals are granted, there are still regulatory approvals we have to go through, one of them being the Sesquahanna River Basin Commission. But in order to keep all the moving parts going, some pieces have to be pushed forward from a timing standpoint. So, I need to read the Annexation Resolution 2020-01A into the record. At the conclusion of that, the resolution would be tabled for future consideration. And that has to do with, if you guys accept the reading of the resolution tonight, then that starts a clock in which we submit a packet to both Cecil County and to the State Clearinghouse for comments on it. And so, it basically requires that the resolution sit for about 45 days to give those agencies the opportunity to comment on those items. So, if the board is interested, I can read the resolution into the record.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the resolution is Town of Rising Sun Annexation Resolution 2020-01A, Annexation Easement Area 524-567-685 and 810 Telegraph Road, Rising Sun, Maryland. Whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland, is a municipality organized under the provisions of the Maryland Constitution and governed under the provisions of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas the Town of Rising Sun has been requested to extend a water distribution system and sewer conveyance system to areas near Maryland, Route 273 Telegraph Road and Wilson Road, to address public health and safety concerns, and whereas the town has entered into an option agreement in order to allow said water distribution and sewer conveyance lines to traverse various properties by way of four easements and upon the lands currently owned by Richard C. and Brenda J. Meadows of 524 Telegraph Road, Rising Sun, Maryland 21911, here and after referred to as the owner, who is the fee simple owner of three separate parcels of land that abut each other and are situated in the sixth election district of Cecil County, Maryland, and within the 500 to 600 block of Telegraph Road in Rising Sun, Maryland 21911, with the three properties being identified as, the first property being located at 524 Telegraph Road, Rising Sun, Maryland 21911, and being generally described as 125 acres of land, more or less, designated as parcel 0051 on the Tax Map 11, being more particularly described in a deed recorded in the deed book 120, page 716, among the land records for Cecil County, Maryland, and shall be identified in this document as the primary property. And the second property being located at 567 Telegraph Road and being generally described as 77.18 acres of land, more or less designated as parcel 0012 on Tax Map 11, being more particularly described in a deed recorded in deed book 848, page 270, among the land records for Cecil County, Maryland, the secondary property. And the third property being located at 685 Telegraph Road and being generally described as 118.059 acres of land, more or less designated as parcel 0013 on Tax Map 11, being more particularly described in a deed recorded in the deed book 848, page 260, among the land records for Cecil County, Maryland, the tertiary property. And whereas the town has entered into option easement agreements in order to allow said water distribution and sewer conveyance lines to traverse various properties by way of three easements in and upon the lands currently owned by Albeck Farms Incorporated, 810 Telegraph Road, Rising Sun, Maryland 21911, here and after referred to as the owner, who is the fee simple owner of two separate parcels of land that abut each other and are situated in the sixth election district of Cecil County, Maryland, and within the 800 block of Telegraph Road in Rising Sun, Maryland 21911, with the two properties being identified as, A, the first property being located at 810 Telegraph Road, Rising Sun, Maryland, and being generally depicted as 153.871 acres of land, more or less, designated as parcel 0015 on Tax Map 11, being more particularly described in a deed recorded in deed book 185, page 576, among the land records for Cecil County, Maryland, the primary property. And the second property being located at 810 Telegraph Road, Rising Sun, Maryland 21911, and being generally described as 26.19 acres of land, more or less designated as parcel 473 on Tax Map 11, being more particularly described in a deed recorded in deed book 1120, page 64, among the land records for Cecil County, Maryland, the primary property. And whereas the seven easement reflected in the respective option agreements, along with portions of the State Highway Right-of-Way for Telegraph Road, Route 273, see State Highway Right-of-Way plat number 1737, shall be annexed into the corporate limits of the Town of Rising Sun and shall be known as the Annexation Easement Area, and shall allow said water distribution and sewer conveyance lines to traverse owner's properties and for the purposes of delivering a water distribution system and sewer conveyance system to areas near Maryland, Route 273 Telegraph Road, and Wilson Road to address public health and safety concerns. And whereas pursuant to the authority of Section 3 Home Rule of Article XIE Municipal Corporations of the Constitution of Maryland and of Subtitle IV of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended and the Code of the Town of Rising Sun, the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun are vested with the authority to enlarge the corporate boundaries of the town. And whereas no person resides in the area to be annexed, and Richard C. and Brenda J. Meadows, the sole owners of all of the assessed valuation of the real property located at 524-567 and 685 Telegraph Road collectively contain the easement areas to be annexed, and Albeck Farms Incorporated, the sole owners of all of the assessed valuation of the real property located at 810 Telegraph Road, contain the remaining additional easements to be annexed, and have respectively consented to said annexation and separate annexation agreements dated February 7, 2020, and February 5, 2020. These agreements will be recorded in the land records of Cecil County and further outline terms and conditions related to this annexation. It is therefore resolved by the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun that all of the following lands, constituent, contiguous to the Town of Rising Sun and the sixth election district Cecil County, state of Maryland, known as the Annexation Easement Areas, as shown on the annexation plat attached here too as Exhibit A, prepared for the Town of Rising Sun, Richard C. and Brenda J. Meadows and Albeck Farms Incorporated by KCI Technologies Incorporated, dated February 25, 2020, the said overall annexation easement areas being more particularly bounded and described as follows. So, for the purposes of time, I'm not going to read all of those meets and bounds, that is a real tongue teaser to read those things in addition, but basically these come from a professional survey that was done that marks out the corners of everything that's going to be annexed into the town, and I'll show you that picture in a second. So, these are all the meets and bounds descriptions of the entire easement. And you get down to this next phrase, "The total overall annexation easement area described above and within said meets and bounds shall be 4.3656 acres of land, more or less, and be added to the corporate boundaries of the Town of Rising Sun, but not subject to any provisions of the Charter, Code of the Town of Rising Sun, ordinances, and other rules and regulations of the Town of Rising Sun. And the town hereby waives the right to collect Town of Rising Sun real estate taxes on the portion of the property, annexation easement areas, until such future time as any of the above entire parcels at the request of the respective property owners are annexed into the corporate limits of the Town of Rising Sun. Additionally, no municipal services of the Town of Rising Sun shall be provided to the owner or their properties as a result of the annexation, and be it further resolved that the zoning map of the Town of Rising Sun be amended to include this newly annexed easement areas, and the use of the land shall continue, and the existing county zoning and permitted uses of the land affected by this annexation shall remain in effect, and that no request for a waiver of zoning from the county is requested. And be it further resolved that the resolution shall be effective 46 days following its passage and approval. Therefore, be it further resolved that the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun introduce this resolution on the 25th day of February, February 25, 2020." Now, to show you the actual annexation areas here, and the elected body, you have more of a version of the map. For the purposes of people looking at this, the left-hand side of the page is the Knutson property. And if you're familiar, if you go out 273 and make a right on the Pierce Road, the Knutson property is essentially all of that farmland on the left-hand side across the street from Brian's Grace. In order to annex any property into a town, it has to be contiguous. So, this heavily dashed line right here is showing the current incorporated limits of the Town of Rising Sun. The easement starts about 30 feet to the south of that corner point, and this heavily gray shaded area, which is essentially 30 feet wide, running across both of these pieces of farmland, are the area that's being annexed into the town. So, when you look at the context of the document, it talks about large acres of land. It's only the 4.365 whatever is in the resolution, it's 4.365 acres of land that's actually being annexed in. As I've said before, I think it's important to note, for the benefit of the two property owners, this is not something that they were looking to develop their land. They have the ability to annex if they want in the future. They're not required to annex their entire land, and they're not required to connect to any of the water and sewer lines running in front of their property. So, that concludes that, reading of that resolution. I think it would be appropriate, Mayor, if you entertain a motion to table the resolution.
I make a motion to table the resolution until future date.
Second? All right, just been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding the Annexation Resolution 2020-01A? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Has been tabled. Thank you, Town Administrator.
All right. The next resolution is for a fee schedule, a change to fee schedule, and this has to do with the impact fees, the benefit assessment fees for the Town of Rising Sun. And as a quick recap, it is normal for a municipality to charge any new connections to the water and/or sewer system, basically a fee to be able to have the right to connect to the system. And where this comes from is that, when you think about our town in particular, our existing residents and property owners have been paying the infrastructure cost to improve the sewer plant and to bring good quality water into the Town of Rising Sun with some abundance so that we're not going in the drought restrictions like we used to. It would not be fair, look at it this way, it would not be fair for someone on the outside to wait for all that money to be spent and then be able to jump in and get the same benefit of the residents and property owners that have been paying the debt service on that. So, it is very common for municipalities to, A, charge what is called a benefit assessment fee, and that benefit assessment fee can be for a variety of things, and you're going to see that we have a couple items that are above and beyond the sewer and water, to basically not only have some of that money available for debt service, but also, that's another way of generating your rainy day fund for future things that have to be done at the sewer plant or in the water system. Or, for instance, as you know, we've been looking to pave streets and fix sidewalks over the years by collecting impact fees for streets and sidewalks, and enables you to build a little nest egg of money that's earmarked for those streets and sidewalks. And so, generally speaking, the idea is, when you're introducing more users to the water and sewer, you should pay a fee for that. If you're introducing more people driving on your streets and sidewalks, then that developer or builder should pay basically a benefit assessment fee for that. Now that you understand, and we've recapped the benefit assessment, benefit assessment fees can be all over the place. The Town of Rising Sun did a benefit assessment fee back in like 2009, and the estimated cost for everything that we hypothetically might have to do to our system was necessitating a benefit assessment fee of about $37,000, which is, when you look at it from a business standpoint, nobody's going to be able to come into your community to build. So, benefit assessment fees are something that fluctuate, basically the same way supply and demand is. So, when the economy is doing very well and people really want to build, you can get away with having higher benefit assessment fees. Now, with that in mind, if anybody ever challenges your benefit assessment fee, you better be able to go into court and explain how you came up with the numbers to say what those costs are going to be. So, if you have a really, really high number, then you better have at least a third party who did an evaluation on why it should be that way. Now, on the flip side, we all know that we are, to some degree, although the economy is doing very well, new home construction is not the way it used to be back in 2005, '06, '07, and '08 before the recession hit. So, a lot of communities have tried to create incentives to get people to invest in their communities. And so, what this comes down to is the Town of Rising Sun needs to make sure that it is competitive with not only the other communities of Cecil County, but the other communities right over the Pennsylvania line, because they have assessment fees also. So, if your fees are too high, people are not going to invest in your community. And let me give you a quick snapshot on why that is important. And I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, but when you hear people rightfully say, "I want my community to stay the way it always has," that can be a good thing. But if you consider the fact that the Town of Rising Sun was in a sewer and water moratorium for roughly 15, 16 some odd years, that was sort of a manufactured force, keep everything exactly the way it was. And on the surface, that answers the prayers of some folks who don't want to see the town change, but the downside of that is there were no new investments coming into the town. And we've talked about this numerous times in the budget process. The value of homes in the Town of Rising Sun is a general raw thumb, decreased by 33% from 2010 through 2016, which meant that everybody's value was suffering from it staying exactly the way it was. It wasn't really the intent to keep it that way, but the sewer and water moratorium sort of manufactured the same end result. So, staying exactly the same way, just like any other business that has to rebrand itself or do things different, we have to be competitive. And at the end of the day, we are in a competition with other communities for people to want to live here and invest here, because the end result is everybody's quality of life gets better, the value in their homes increases, if it's done the right way. So, what we're looking to do here tonight is to lower our, temporarily lower our impact fees to jump, or benefit assessment fees, to try to jumpstart and to improve upon the initiatives that have already been taking place in the Town of Rising Sun. So, the resolution that you have before you is Resolution 2020-02 titled Fee Schedule Amendment: Meter Charges and Benefit Assessment Fees. Whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland, is a municipality organized under the provisions of the Maryland Constitution and governed under the provisions of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas Chapter 9 titled Finance, Taxation, Business, and Trade of the Town's Code of Ordinances contains Article 6 titled Establishment of a Town Fee Schedule, which provides for creation of a town fee schedule established by resolution and amended from time to time by the Mayor and Commissioners. Whereas currently, Section 5 titled Annexation, Land Development, and Zoning Fees provides for fees associated with the development of land or renovation of properties that creates the need for an additional connection to the town's sewer and/or water infrastructure. And whereas the town, having lived at the previous sewer and water moratorium, is looking to help facilitate good responsible development and investment into the town. And whereas the Mayor and Commissioners recognize that the availability and abundance of sewer and water capacity often spurs financial investments in the community by way of new construction, larger economic markets, businesses, and employment opportunities, these investments not only provide services to our residents and improve property values, but help spread the financial responsibilities for any past and/or future infrastructure upgrades across a larger user base and better positions the town to control utility costs to the benefit of our residents. And whereas the Mayor and Commissioners recognize that lowering the benefit assessment fee associated with the town's sewer and water infrastructure will help to encourage the new investments into the community. And whereas, as part of the initiative to promote the position of our residents and property owners, the Mayor and Commissioners are temporarily lowering the town's impact fees from the current total of $19,600 to $14,000 for each new estimated dwelling unit, EDU, which is a standard measurement of the required flow for both residential and non-residential properties, currently listed as 250 gallons per day of... properties, currently listed as 250 gallons per day of use. In addition, a mechanism will be created in which a developer, builder, or property owner can receive a discount for payment upon issuance of a building permit, or can pay these benefit assessment fees to include a one-time recordation and administrative fee over a five-year period through the town's utility billing system. And whereas the Maryland Commissioners also recognize that counting the charge for water meters is a function of business, whether it is a new connection or upgrade of any existing meter, and therefore should not be treated as an impact fee, but that of a normal cost of doing business and based upon market cost for the purchase of the required meter. Therefore, being enacted and resolved that the Maryland Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun are modifying the existing town fee schedule to reflect these temporary reductions in the impact fees. These changes, highlighted in red, can be found and identified on Page 15 of the attached document titled 2020 Town of Rising Sun Fee Schedule: Recommended Updates 2-2520. Now, therefore, being further resolved that the Maryland Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun pass and approve and adopt the resolution on this 25th day of February 2020. So, Board, you have the fee schedule in your packets there. And if you, unfortunately, again, my computer's not going to let me open a document here. So you, if you look, if you go to Page 15 of the fee schedule, Pages 1 through 14 remain unchanged. And I think it's always good to readopt the entire fee schedule when you make a change, and that's something that historically we have always done. So if you remember, in the resolution, I talked about meters should really not be a function of an impact fee. And the reason why I'm saying that is anybody who is building or doing some kind of renovation that requires a new connection, they know they have to buy a water meter from us. And so putting that water meter in the analysis of the impact fee actually artificially inflates the impact fee and makes it look higher than what it really is. So you see here in the document, I have basically separated water, sewer, and fire sprinkler meter hookup fees into its own standalone section. And in that, you see that the fee for meters for any of those situations will be a $100 administration fee and purchase cost for all meters required. The reason being is our existing fee schedule just charged a flat rate of $200 to put a meter in. Now again, I like to always say this, I think that services that are not enjoyed or utilized by every resident should be a service charge and not something that comes out in real estate tax, because what that does is it creates, I always say, the little old lady living on Main Street minding her own business, part of her real estate tax ends up being paid for one of our people to take a meter down and install it on the side of a house of a builder who's going to make profit on it. And so we don't want real estate tax covering that, so it becomes a separate charge. So the $100 reflects our people going down to install the meters, but it also reflects our administrative folks programming the utility billing system to be able to do the billing going forward. So because you're noticing here, because I eliminated the one line that talked about, they talked about sewer meters, trying to get this to jumpstart. Okay, it came up. That way we can keep everybody up to speed on it. Give me a second and I'll go to Page 15. All right, so this is where I talked about combining everything together. You're noticing the fee scheduled, we used to have a separate line item for sewer. I eliminated that line item and combined it into this one here. However, although it doesn't happen very often, if it hypothetically were to happen where somebody wanted to connect to our sewer but didn't want to connect to the water, there's no water meter to put in, but we would still charge the $100 administrative fee to set for all the administrative work of setting them up into our utility billing system. So that's what that note is explaining there. Then, under benefit assessment fees, and you see where everything that's new is in red and everything that's staying the same is in black, and everything that's being eliminated is stricken through. So when you start to see J, K, L, O on down the line there, it gave the appearance in the fee schedule that the impact fees were all these individual things. So the idea was to put it under one umbrella heading, which is under Item I, and it's called Benefit Assessment Fee. The following four Benefit Assessment Fees, BAF totaling $14,000, will be charged against any new construction or renovation that results in a new or additional connection to the town's sewer and/or water system. The BAF shall be billed to the developer, builder, or property owner as follows. If a builder submits a building permit and pays the, and is willing to pay the impact fee or benefit assessment upfront, we will give them a $1,000 discount on that as a way of, we get the influx of the cash flow right away as opposed to waiting over, you know, 120-day period. So if they agree to do that, we give them a $1,000 discount, so their benefit assessment goes from 14 to 13. If the developer or builder decides to only pay the benefit assessment as they sell the house or move somebody into what they're doing, then they pay the full $14,000 in benefit assessment. Sometimes we have situations where we have people that are actually property owners that are living in the town of Rising Sun, or they have businesses in the town of Rising Sun, where paying impact fees to try to promote the investment would be better suited if we gave them the option of paying it over a five-year period. And so Item C is a five-year payment plan collected through the utility billing system that shall be placed as a lien against the property and recorded in the land records of Cecil County that must be satisfied upon transfer of ownership. The cost shall include a one-time 6% upfront administrative charge to cover recordation fees and monthly billing costs. Admin costs are non-refundable. All rules regarding utility payments shall apply to include penalties for late payment and shut-off of services for non-payment. Note, this option is not available to the builder or developer unless such builder or developer is a property owner of the subject property upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So let me tell you the thought process behind that. If I am a builder and I sell a home to Commissioner Ortho-Gree, and if I try to pass along that benefit assessment fee over a five-year period, I'm not paying it, he's paying it, because he owns the house and he bears the rest. So it would not be fair for a builder to be able to pass along that benefit assessment fee to an unsuspecting buyer. And we all know when you go to buy a home or even move into an apartment, there's a wealth of paperwork you have to sign, and a lot of times it gets lost in the shuffle. So you wouldn't want somebody, our future resident, who we want to welcome to our community, think that they're buying a house for X, Y, Z amount of money, and then come to realize that on their deed is a lien that says they have to pay $14,000 off over a five-year period. So that's why we want to make it clear that unless the builder is going to continue to own the land or is going to live there, then they cannot get the benefit of this five-year payment plan, because we don't want the unintended consequence of residents coming to this board or any other board in the future saying, "How could you do that? You let the builder walk away." So that's a safeguard built into that. The, I talked about the four benefit assessment fees. What is the water capital improvement fee? It is currently $8,000. It's going to be reduced to $6,000 per water connection, and that's for every 250 gallons of projected use or EDU. So if it's a residential home, it's $6,000 for the water. If it's a Pizza Hut or something that uses 500 gallons a day of water, then they're paying $12,000 for that. So it's based upon the volume of water that you use. Water meters used to track flows for fire sprinkler systems or processes related to tracking of consumption that are not independently related to a new EDU or connection will pay for the meter installation if detailed in age above, but will not be charged a water capital improvement fee. Let me explain the mindset behind that. We are purchasing meters now that allow us to shut water off at the computer. We don't have to go out to the street anymore and turn the valve to shut the water off. Now that residential homes, new residential homes have to have a fire sprinkler system put in there, and although the courts have said that a utility can shut the water off for non-payment, which would mean that the fire sprinkler is taken out of circulation, although the courts say the utility has no liability, I don't think we as a community want to be dealing with, somebody didn't pay the bill, we shut the water off, and now the fire sprinkler system didn't activate. So the way around that is an inch and a half service line comes in, it's diverted off into two services, one with the regular meter on it and the other one with the fire sprinkler meter on it, which means if we shut the domestic water off, we want to make sure that someone doesn't tie into the fire sprinkler to bypass and get water. Well, if they do that, that meter is going to activate, and we will know that they are doing that. Now, the other thing is the meters that we are putting in are designed for a fire sprinkler system, so it doesn't impede the volume of water that's needed to supply the heads. So the other situation here is at times we get businesses that want to be able to track the volume of water that they are using, and they want a separate meter. Again, we don't want to charge them another benefit assessment fee because they're not adding anything new to the system. They just want to track their water consumption. They pay for that meter, they get a monthly bill just like anybody else, they're just not charged a benefit assessment. So the point being, when you do these things, you need to anticipate the unintended consequences down the road, and that's what we're attempting to do. The sewer capital improvement fee is reduced from $8,000 to $6,000. Sidewalk, streets and sidewalks impact fee will remain at $1,000. Police and fire impact fee will remain at $1,000. And what was stricken from the list is we used to have an INI study where we would collect $200, or $200, no pun intended, is a drop in the bucket for doing something with INI, so it doesn't make sense to keep it in the impact fee. The other thing we eliminated was a traffic impact study, and that had to do with when we last did the fee schedule back in 2009, State Highway was looking to put around about it Mount Street and Route 1, and they could not generate money to be able to go towards that. So as part of an agreement between the town and State Highway at that time, because the town thought it was going to have all this development, we would collect a $1,000 traffic impact fee that then could be used to improve traffic out on Route 1. That was the reason for it. Well, obviously, there's a traffic signal there now, there's no need. So again, it gives us an opportunity to lower the impact fee. Before issues of any building permits or occupancy permits, the applicant is responsible for reimbursement to the town of Rising Sun for any and all engineering fees, attorney fees, and advertising fees. So the rest of the document remains the same. Thank you for the patience of going through it, but, you know, we have to lay it out there so that everybody understands.
Town Administrator, do you have a report?
No.
All right. The mayor's report is pretty brief this evening.
You need to adopt.
Yeah. You're getting ahead of yourself there, buddy.
I'm not reading it again next month.
Resolution 2020-02, which is the Fee Schedule Amendment, you have copies of both. Could I get a motion?
So I make a motion to him to accept the Resolution 2020-02.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Ms. Maynard.
The answer's no.
Okay, there. Name's Brenda Maynard, I live in Valleyville. Reference to the nice little smell we're having. From what I understand, MDA went in there and fined the heck out of them the other day. Also, now that the smell's so bad, it's come to our attention that we need to be contacting the air management office. They want people to start bringing the phone off the hook down there. So I have the gentleman's name, it's Jay Bozeman, and his number, so that we can start calling him, and I guess they can come in and put some type of testing in the air. I don't, I'm not real sure about what it's, all it is. They can bring it in, find out what kind of chemicals are coming, is coming off that smell.
Town Administrator, do you have any comments about that? We did talk and we spoke with MDE. Beyond that, I think they haven't gotten back to us besides that first email they sent us.
Oh, they did.
Okay.
Commissioner, please.
Well, I had that to bring up about this. First of all, let me clarify something. This is a composting farm now. It is not only a mushroom-growing farm.
Do they even grow mushrooms anymore?
No. It's just a composting farm.
But because of that, it falls under a different organization altogether, okay? The whole time, we've been looking at the farming aspect of it. Kelvin and I both have been in contact with the guy who is in charge of it. They did come out last week, and they found that the pile of chicken manure needed to be covered. That was one thing they found, and told them to cover it immediately. Now, if you've ever been there, if you've ever gone down there, that big brown pile, that is your chicken manure. So that is one action that the MDE is taking. We've gotten emails back and forth. I'm copied on everything that Kelvin gets, and they're in the process of doing more testing. They agreed, they were by the elementary school, and that it was a very unfortunate, putrid, yeah, putrid odor. Okay, now, off on something from this, when they came into town down by Harrington, they believe it smells like sewage. And Alan, I'm going to ask a quick question of you here. To the best of your knowledge, or anybody else in, on the Commissioners or Kelvin, our current plant does not give off odor.
No, there used to be an odor from the pond. I remember Jim Majeski stating several times that film on top, duckweed had an odor, but we no longer use that pond. We use our state-of-the-art sewer plant, and we don't have that odor.
We, I've been driving around at night, Kelvin's been driving around at night, and the smell is down by the, down by bottom of the hill or Harrington, whatever, that smell is in that area, and if you drive up by the Sitco or Star Mart, you can smell it up there. If you drive into the park, you can smell it there if you drive. But if you drive to, sometimes you might smell it in Summer Hill, you do not smell it on Route 1 except a very rare occasion. If you go to the sewer plant, you don't smell it.
Right. You do smell it up in Summer Hill. What, is ironic, is my son who lives, you know, quarter of a mile from the plant, further down on Hopewell, nothing.
Depends, so.
So, I guess to basically answer your question, Brenda, we are aware of it, we're working with the state, and we will keep you updated on what's happening, but we have been very lucky.
But still, you need to call and let them know that you have concerns about it.
Agreed.
And I know with me, not to be smart, in the summertime when I hang out laundry, if that's...